I call to order the September 17th, 2018 meeting of New Caney Independence Division Board of Trustees at 6:35 PM. The chairman of the board is present, all members in attendance. Please rise for the invitation to be made by Mr. Turner. We may stand with the official allegiance, on the Texas flag, be led by Mr. Turner.
Please bow. Father, would you thank you for this wonderful day you've given us? Would you thank you for all the many blessings you've given us? Would you thank you for the wonderful district we have, our employees, most importantly, our students? Would you thank you for the parents that give and care about the students that we have? We ask you to keep our handovers as we go through this evening. We make decisions that will glorify you in all we do. You stand pregnant.
Pleasantly, it's the United States of America, to the people of the United States, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Our Constitution is the basis of our Constitution, for the sake of our Constitution.
Okay, I'll adjourn the agenda to our recognitions. So let's start with this page of Kings Manor.
I'd like to introduce to you five wonderful people from Kings Manor. And I'm going to start with our cafeteria manager, Brenda Sizney. She has just been wonderful this year, calling students by name. She's decorated the child nutrition department back there so fabulously. It's so inviting when you walk in. She's been very helpful in our parenting partners program. She brings out the snacks and takes care of all the teachers and faculty. And we are just so happy to have her. Thank you. Our next person that I would like to introduce you to is Maria Warren. And she is our head custodian. And she's been a very hard worker in keeping Kings Manor looking fabulous. She's been so helpful in setting up for our events, even when I forget to let her know it way in advance, she quickly gets it done if we need to rearrange something. And she helped with our pep rally this year that we've had to kick off school and our grandparents' breakfast to make that fabulous for us. And she did an amazing job helping our 17 new faculty members move in at the beginning of the year. Thank you, Maria. And Ms. Heidi Garza is our E.L. para at Kings Manor. And she consistently goes above and beyond. And she always does it with a smile, just a fabulous smile. She's currently going to school to be a teacher at H.I.A. And she is always can be found working in a small group, helping wherever needed. And she has wonderful relationships with our students and our faculty. And we have been so thankful to have Mr. Burton on campus for the second year. It's his second year. We were happy to have another male teacher on campus in fifth grade. Does he have a prom card or something? He is a good great relationship man. He is so fat bright at building relationships with students. Last week, he was part of our welcome crew in the morning as students were getting out of cars. He's welcoming them and he even told a little one how cute her sparkly shoes were and all of that. He has an amazing reading note in his classroom that looks like a duck blind. And so the students like to go in there and read. It's awesome. You guys should come see it. And our student here tonight is Emma Khan. She, her teachers have described her as responsible, dedicated, kind, humorous, and that she loves learning. She is in our dual-language class and she's multilingual. She's been an example to others and she's so helpful. And we'd like to recognize her tonight.
Good evening. I'm excited to start the recognitions off this year for the 2018-19. And I'm proud to recognize some of our people from N.C.E. I'd like to start with our cafeteria worker, Maria McFoy. She is so full of energy. I wish I could bottle some of that up and save it for me. She always has a smile on her face. And it's amazing in a very short period of time that she's got to know just about all 650 student names. On occasion when she doesn't, she has such a nice way of somehow getting their name out of them. She works hard and in a matter of seconds, she can restock the fruit and veggie tray and get several students through the line. So thank you, Maria, for serving and helping our students every day. The next person I'd like to recognize is our custodian, Teresa Torrebiol. She too has developed excellent relationships with our students. She not only works hard to keep our building clean and safe, but she goes that extra mile to know our students individually. She is constantly helping our students open ketchup, meal, and other plastic containers. And she is always helping us set up desks and chairs and clean up after meetings. Thank you, Teresa, for making our building clean and safe and helping our students at The next person I'd like to recognize is our paraprofessional, Summer Fleming. If you were to walk into her computer lab, you would think she'd been a teacher for years. She is always so kind to kids and is very involved in helping students be successful. Ms. Fleming always has a positive attitude. And during our mini slumber party at the beginning of the year, I found out she was pretty competitive. I am honored to work with Summer as she finishes up this spring to be a teacher in the 2019-2020 school year. Thank you, Summer, for making, working with our kids every day. I know you're going to be a great teacher. And now for our teacher that I'd like to recognize, and that is Monica Kirk. Last year was Ms. Kirk's first year as a teacher in our PACES program. And if you were to walk into her room, you would have thought she'd been doing this for years. Her parents and students think the world of her. When she talks to teachers, she, when you talk to teachers about giving kids a fresh start, she truly knows the meaning of a fresh start every day. She works hard and cares tremendously about her kids. And it is important for her to help them to develop skills that will help them not only be successful in school, but in the future. And speaking of competitive, she too on our mini slumber party night comes dressed in an eagle costume. And in every competition, she's one of the first to jump up on the stage to compete. And she won several competitions. Thank you, Monica, for your passion and love of teaching. And now for what we're all here for, and that is our student, Alma Kunda. Like all of us here at New Caney ISD, we have many awesome students that we can recognize. The student that I would like to recognize often exhibits so many great qualities. She's always smiling. She speaks to me in the hall every day when I see her. When I asked some teachers about her, they said that she was always open to a challenge. And if they had one word to describe her, they would say perseverance. That is continued effort to do or achieve something despite difficulties, failures, or opposition. Alma, you are an outstanding student, and we are so glad that you're a student at New Caney Elementary.
Out of prayer, the agenda is consideration of high-stake field trip to New Caney High Square Cafe. Mr. Turner?
Good evening. Here, I ask permission from the board for a teacher and student to attend the American Royal Live Stop Show in Kingsley, Missouri, at the October 7th through 21st. The funding for this trip on the student's side and registration for the entrance is on the student. And then for the hotel and expenses for the sponsor is out of the seat of the budget. We're requesting permission for you, from you, for a student and teacher to attend the show in Kingsley.
Questions? Is there a motion to refer to Al State Field Trip to New Caney? Coach McRae, say Al's merch, say Al's, Al's opposed, let's break shot.
Thank you.
Out of four, the agenda is delinquent tax report by Ms. Blair and Associates.
Good evening. Appreciate the hat. I'll do introductions. My name is Marys Blair. I'm one of the attorneys with Landmark, Dog, Blair &amp; Sampson. We are very pleased to be your delinquent tax hearing toward the district. I'm just doing quick introductions, and then I will try to report over to Jeff McCarrey. Fortunately, tonight Attorney James, yes, had a conflict at the last minute and was unable to attend. So with me tonight is Jeff McCarrey. He's our operations director in our office. He oversees everything on your account in our office. And we have area manager Jamie Tucker with us. She also works on your account. So I just want to say thank you. It's always a pleasure to be here. And I want to turn it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Marys. Good evening. Before you each of you have a copy, maybe in your pack as well, that's our annual report. I'm pleased to say we're back on schedule this year. Had a little hurricane last year, but kind of kicked us forward. All the regular attention, not to the couple letters, but to the second page. This is basically a snapshot of your delinquent tax roll as of August 31st. You can see that the roll is just over 2.7 billion comprised of 2,600 owners and 3,500 accounts. During the past year, we have filed 56 suits, over $424,000 on those delinquent taxes. Our suits were not successful in collections. We follow through the judgment on those suits. We took 42 judgments the past year for $185,000. And if the judgment was not successful, then we pursued that to a tax sale. And in the past year, we posted 43 tracks for just over $109,000 on behalf of the district. One out of the bankruptcies, there's only 22 active cases at the moment for $66,000. So that is just an odd issue for all the officers, just don't have a bankruptcy issue. Tax deferrals, those are accounts for over 65 disabled persons. They have made an application to the appraisal district. It's only on their home state. And they essentially, they do not have to pay those taxes until it ceases to be their home state. And we can enforce collections. If we have a suit, we have to stop it. And if we don't have a suit, we can't file one. So that's across the board. We presently have 180, excuse me, 108 deferred properties for a little over $370,000 in delinquent taxes, which is, that is notable, it's 13.7% of your total delinquent balance. The mailings, those are just the details of our various letters we mail throughout the year to both real and business personal property accounts. That's one of our major totals. The delinquent collections percentages, you'll see the last two years, we have achieved over 46% collections with the base tax that's turned over each July. So that's a, that's a, we're proud of that number. It's increased steadily since we got here, the earliest year there is, the year before we were hired. So you can see we've gone up each year. If you'll turn the page, for those that are, prefer the visual, here's your delinquent tax roll pie chart a year. And I'm actually quite proud of this one because 38% of your total delinquent balances 2017 taxes that were just turned over to us in July. And that's a, that's the highest number on the pad in the years since we've represented you. And another, if you note, between 15, 16, and 17, 59% of your entire delinquent balance is just three years old or less. So that's another outstanding figure. We've really worked to clean up the old stuff and been quite successful at it. And then finally, the bar charts on the next page shows your July 1 delinquent roll balances. This one, this one is one I'm most proud of. If you noted, we're, this July 1, the delinquent turnover is $3,156,000. That is less than it was in 2012 before we started working. And you go, well, that's not much less. But when you consider the letting, that each year, you know, y'all collect, like this year, you're at 98.5% collections through the end of August, which is an outstanding number. And especially this year, in light of the hurricane last year, didn't know what effect on delinquencies, if there would be just a whole lot of stuff that turned over, but it really did not make us any impact. So anyway, it's in light of the letting increase from the previous years, to have a lesser delinquent balance is quite an accomplishment. And it reflects on not just us, but the tax office, the appraisal district, your tax roll is cleaned up. And like I say, if you were doctors, obviously, you know, you said your blood pressure, your thing is, you're in good shape. Your cholesterol is low. Anyway, any questions?
Thank you for the work. Appreciate y'all.
We appreciate y'all. We're forward to continuing to work in working.
We're gonna adjust the agenda slightly next from the superintendent's report. I have Ms. Reed give a report. Ms. Reed, Adrian Gutierrez, Bright Bites.
Bright Bites. Good evening. How are you? Measuring where we are on the learning program is a daunting task. And here in New Caney ISD, we utilize a program called Bright Bites that surveys our students in grades 3 through 12, our teachers and parents, in the fall and spring to gather data related to their opinions regarding our digital learning program and technology. Tonight, we have Mr. Adrian Gutierrez from Bright Bites, who has traveled from Colorado to review some of our data from our most recent survey with you.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Although I came from Colorado yesterday, I grew up near here, so a little bitty town called Bill, but that matters to anyone here, but I'm a little boy. Anyway, we have a presentation, and I thought we were going to show it, but I'll use it as talking points since you can't see anything. So you've collected with us multiple years, the surveys, multiple years.
It's on your report. We've got it.
Oh, okay. I guess you can follow along if you want. So we've collected a few years. And what we're doing tomorrow actually is we're going to meet with the principals, media specialists, and curriculum staff to show the survey results and talk about action plans. Like Shiny said, what that means to the classroom, down to the student level. And what you've seen, since you've collected the first time to the most recent collection in the spring, is an increase, not only in usage, but student learning, adoption, connectivity, absolutely everything. So you've got this overall case score that's entered classroom access, skills, and environments, right? And your case score, it started out in the spring of 2015 as 1095. And over the years, you've grown and you've improved on your overall score. Right now, it's at 1122. So you've not only increased your overall score, but in each one of the domains, C, A, S, and E, you've improved as well. And what that means to you is, as a district in the state of Texas, you're head of most of the districts in Texas. Your score is so high that it's ahead of Texas and it's ahead of the nation, so as an average. And just to put that in perspective, in the nation, we're in about one in every five districts for the survey collection. In Texas, even better, about one in every four districts. So you are, as an average, above most of the schools in Texas. So you're doing very well. And what we talk about tomorrow in our presentation or in our work is what the curriculum principals and media specialists do to impact that. So we take this data and what do they do to support the teachers, okay? And I put in the presentation, if you're following along, a lot of ranked spots, so beliefs, students learn, technology, the teachers' access to schools, a whole list of things are going very well. And then I put the trends in there, where you started at and where you are. And you might see a dip, kind of a little dip last year, what happened last year at this time, just before, right? A lot of, a lot of things happened with the hurricane last year. So you had a little bit of dip, that's to, you know, be expected. And then where it says by domain, you see those four lines we follow along the presentation, that's each of the domains, your classroom access, the skills, and environment. And you've gone up in all of those as well. There are some goals for New Caney that Jeannie has shared with me, digital citizenship, Chromebook usage, and why all of this matters to you as a district. And so we put in each of these slides why it matters, the research behind it. So all of these surveys and all the data points are backed with research. It's not just someone comes up with why they think it is, it's all research, all right? And so this is year five of your Chromebook adoption and your student foundational skills. For instance, this data point, if you're looking at the slides, it shows an example of students sending email. Well, it's an important skill, and the data is at the bottom, and why it matters. There's a whole bunch of other data points that support this, but this is just one example that supports your initiative of Chromebooks. So the students have skills to excel after they leave New Caney, right? Their online skills, same thing. And to keep it short, what we're gonna do is we're thinking about the ultimate goal for New Caney, what's, what's the purpose? And so Jeannie and I are working with those groups tomorrow and, you know, evaluating how we're using the Chromebooks, or how you're using Chromebooks, pardon me. And then what's the student learning, what the impact is on the student learning. And so that's what we're really working on now. So thank you three times, it's a pleasure to be back. Any questions?
I have a question, maybe more for Mr. Frank, though. But after we gathered this data, then what do we do with it to make sure that it's implemented? Because I imagine we're spending a lot of money for this kind of data. So what's the process of being back to classroom, the order to go from here?
It's the driver behind the goals and the direction that we want the students to go and see if we're actually gaining, making those gains in usage of the technology. And if we see that we're not going in a positive manner, so we readjust those goals and that happens. And we worry about, we talk specifically what we're doing with the information as far as what the teachers actually use it for, or what we actually see it being related back to the classroom.
Right. And what we do is we take, whenever we did the survey in the fall and the spring, we look at the data. And it breaks it down on the Bright Bites report exactly, you know, from the teacher point of view and the student point of view as far as usage in the classroom and, you know, where the kids are on their skills. And we then look at it and we're like, okay, where do we need to direct our professional development for our teachers? What student-specific skills do we need to work on with our kids? So it lets us know where our kids are, where our teachers are, what do we need to work on.
So if we see a dip in usage, say if usage all of a sudden drops off, questions we'd be asking, what's, what are the factors leading to students not using the Chromebooks in the classroom? Is it a teacher issue? Is it an equipment issue? And so we can analyze those things and give us direction of what we need to do correctly.
And it breaks it down by campus scores also. So we can, we can take it all the way down to individual campuses and look at it, see where the issue is, and work on it with those specific campuses in mind, or where the problem is. It helps us a lot. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Out of five on the agenda is open forum, nobody signed up. Out of six on the agenda is closed meeting. The board will now meet in closed meeting in the authority section. 551, 1071 for the purpose of course, no matter, 551, 1071 for attorney consultation. The agreement is open, 551, 1072 for deliberation regarding purchase and change leads or value reference. Any action as a result of the closed session discussion will take place after the board recommends an open meeting. The time is 7:02. Forty is closed meeting at 7:55, and we'll now reconvene in open session. Four, a couple things in communication that we wanted to update you on, a couple things we're working on this fall. One of them, we've got a visual on here this evening. The district is implementing an IP television system across the district, our Internet and television system across the district. Some 200 monitors, 200, 250 monitors been all across the school district that are, will allow us to manage and distribute information centrally across this network so that you're standing on one side of the district in a lobby, and one school, you're seeing the same sort of content if you're in another place on the other side of the district. We can push information in a few ways, and you can see a couple of them right now. One of them, we can direct our subscribe channels to that video source right there, which is the main source. We can also push, also push our own video playlist to that source, which is what we primarily do. It's a work in progress. We've got a little bit of content up there now. But over time, we'll produce a ton of content, video content, in that main video source. The system integrates Twitter specifically. There are other ways to integrate other social media, but we use Twitter in this system. It's a good visual platform, so we can post a lot of pictures and videos, and people can see what's going on across the district. There's a couple of what they call widgets or apps in the system, so the date is there, the time is there. A portion of this overall network, we have branded the link. The purpose is sort of embodied in the name, the idea is to connect our campuses in a visual way. Right now, we're utilizing a weather app, which gives you a forecast for a couple of days. Eventually, I see that area being a place where campuses in particular can use that as content areas specific to now, so that we push content centrally through the video source, through social media. But depending on where you are, you're also seeing information that's unique to that site. The system allows us to design various templates. This is the first one that we've
This is the first one that we've created, but eventually as we get better at this, we'll be able to design templates that are unique to a location or even unique to an event, depending on where that is. We've got some ideas for the video source. I think I'd like to build playlists for all of our campuses so that we're sure, make sure that video is going out across the system from what's going on everywhere. Promotional video, asylum PSAs, I've got an idea to do official district history. We've got a lot of content there, just kind of sitting there and this is a perfect platform to kind of share that. I thought about potentially integrating the video, the reality model, mission and vision, something that also connects us. So that's sort of the purpose of this system. The other thing we're working on this fall is an update to the district website. The current site is entering its fifth year, so visually from a design perspective, it's getting a little bit stale, but the technology is also better now. So we're looking for increased functionality, security, mobility and accessibility, especially for those with disabilities. We're rebuilding it from the ground up, so we're not moving content over, we're starting over. So it's about a four-month process, we've already kind of got it started, we're working closely with the campuses, with the departments. And our goal will be to go live with that sometime between Thanksgiving and Christmas break, we'll give you a heads up, you know, when we know exactly. But it'll be like a light switch, one day you'll go from the current site to the new one. Any questions or comments on any of those two things?
I'll just expand a little bit further. This idea came to us, we were at an architect's firm and they had this going telling about the company and what was going on and they had this on all of their monitors. And we came back, how long has that been? Six, eight months? Mr. Millings Department under Ben's guidance has worked really hard to come out, come up with a system which would link us all together. We just had no way visually to link the whole district together and we came up with, it took us, what, how many months to come up with the name, Link? This company, their theme was, who's the real hero, the chicken or the hog? And their name, their, it's not Glip, what is it?
Platforms.
Platforms. Was Swizzle, which dealt with the, and they had a little pig up there, because it really felt like the pig was more dedicated than the chicken to laying eggs. So anyway, we thought that was pretty cool, but we, off of that idea, it generated this to connect our campuses and Dr. Powers Department, like I said, along with Mr. Millings Department did, and they were instrumental in this happening. And I think it's going to be something special. It will probably be presented at a, probably at some presentations around the state to show what you can do and how you put this together in the future. So I think it's state of the art and not all districts have this, but I think we'll see it bloom and blossom in the future. We're really proud of it.
Great.
All right, Ms. Schopfer.
I can read them. The lessons.
You're not Ms. Schopfer.
I'm not Ms. Schopfer. But she's my boss and she said go. You can answer. Absolutely, absolutely. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak to you tonight. And I will talk to you real quick about personal financial literacy. A few months ago, when I accepted the position, one of the first items that Mrs. Schopfer talked to me about was helping to develop and get off the ground our personal financial literacy class. And so after meeting with some curriculum specialists and some principals, we think we have something we want to start off with. So just want to touch base with you about that real quick. Obviously, we want to help our students to develop the skills to help them make informed financial decisions. Let's allow them to be, to lead financial secure lifestyles, understand personal financial responsibility. So right now, the best platform avenue that we think we're going to go through is not named Swizzle, but we're going to go through our math course with our ninth graders is what we plan on doing. And so we felt like that would be the least disruptive to our master scheduling that we've got going. It doesn't, we're going to start at the, we're going to leave the first semesters it is and then the second semester, what we'll do, our, it's going to be a social studies credit. And so our current math teachers, no, no other certification is required. Really little is going to have to be done on the teachers' mark because our curriculum specialists are developing a blueprint that they're going to put into canvas of the test curriculum, the whole I R S, the teachers just put it in there. And so all we've got to do is to be able to meet with them and tell them this is what's coming forward to them. And so it'll, like I said, it'll serve as additional credit. We felt like with ninth graders, it would affect their overall GPA if we started with them in the ninth grade. And so like I said, no additional teacher certification requirement is going to be done. So this, it has, the start with ninth graders, we felt like had the littlest or the smallest impact on our campuses, so that's why we chose the ninth grade. And because our seniors as well, that's the economics class already. Any questions or comments?
What kind of classes are going to be in the curriculum?
We are still developing that. We are looking at some different ideas that are kind of already developed so that we don't have to start from scratch, but I can give you more as we develop more and our specialists are developing that. So right now, I don't know, we're working on that.
No, I think it's exciting, here's a new course.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Is that going to be something like the Money Matters course that's currently offered? Are you aware of that?
I am aware of that one, because we're still kind of looking at it, we're trying to figure out what curriculum is going to be most suitable to our ninth grade students, which is going to be most age appropriate since our seniors are already doing that. We kind of felt like personal financial literacy would probably be better suited for our seniors, but because they're already taking the economics class, that's why we decided to go ahead and start with our freshmen, because getting it implemented this year, which is what we have been charged to do, that created the littlest hardship for our overall schedules, that's why we moved with that. Thank you. Thanks, appreciate you. Do that.
All right, now, Paul, your turn.
I mean, it starts with you first. Very much, I'll be brief, I just wanted to come and update you on our energy conservation savings. We're about to wrap up our eighth year of the program. Currently this year, we're at about $759,000 saved, of course, since this year, loans about 18% on the year. If I include that in the overall program savings since its inception, we're at $6,400,000, give or take, which is about 20% reduction in energy usage from the baseline year, which eight years ago, we're starting to get a little bit away from that. And so part of, you know, looking back and keeping the accountability piece, we're also a participant in what's called the RMS programs, went on in cooperation with Clear Result Energy. You've seen them a couple of times come, things like that. We get to be a special participant in part of their program, but what they did was they kind of drew a new line in the sand and said, okay, your new baseline year as far as we're concerned is 2014, we're going to measure you against 2014. I took a little issue with that because that was after a lot of hard work and a lot of ground game, but even when you compare us to 2014 to this year, we're still 5% better savings than 2014 as we said this year. So the program's still flourishing and just continuing to appreciate y'all taking the service and things like that. So if there's any questions, I'd be answering.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Out of eight on the agenda's reports and proposals, the board members. Out of nine on the agenda's consent count consists of consideration minutes, consideration financial boards, consideration purchasing boards, consideration personnel reports, consideration of campus improvement plan, performance objectives, consideration of district goals, and consideration of MOU for JJ and EEP. Any questions? Motion approved, items on the seat count. Most of my votes say aye. Aye. Most opposed? I'm just kidding. I was impressed with this. Okay. Out of ten on the agenda's consideration approval for a change order for renovations of former athletic offices in the building at Donfort Stadium from 2015.
Yes, sir, this change order includes updating the area to the right of the baseball locker room. That is going to be Dean Murray's and Sheldon Erble's office area over there from the facility planning department. In addition to that, the helping hands closet for our homeless students and families, we're going to, for the channeling they did, rather than going to the baseball field, we're going to make that make doors to your left, so that way they can have access to the clothes and supplies that they need when they go through that process. So we'll give them a nice storage area over there. In addition to that, we're going to renovate and update the restrooms, the baseball fields, so that way they can also serve as a changing area for people coming in and taking advantage of those clothes, so try them on before they take them off. So just asking you approval on that change.
Any questions? Very much approved, the change order for renovations of the former athletic offices in the building at Donfort Stadium. Most of my votes say aye. Aye. Most opposed? Motion is approved. Administration's recommended that item 11 on the agenda be tabled. We're trying to take some additional.
We're going to mention that, we're going to have to, so we'll bring it to the board.
Is there a motion to table the item 11 on the agenda?
Several.
Second, sir.
Most of my votes say aye. Most opposed? Motion approved.
And that's the cake classroom.
It's the cake classroom.
We're updating.
No further business, meeting adjourned at 8:00.